Can you hear us? Yeah, great. All right, we're gonna open the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, September 28th at 4:32. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Do we have anybody on the Zoom call?
No.
Not yet. All right. Next up, we have approval of the warrants. Jason, I know you love doing that. You wanna do it again?
Sure. Make a motion to approve payroll warrant 21-13 in the amount of $190,819.02.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous?
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 21-13 in the amount of $447,891.10, which breaks down to the town, $59,405.23. Water and sewer, $2,478.60. Payroll withholding, $12,765.92. Light bills, $364,104.54. Grants and revolving, $9,136.81.
Second. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Yep.
I just been noticing the light bills.
They're awful.
Is that, uh, they're normal? They're always around $400,000? Maybe it's me, I just haven't been paying attention that much, but... I know last month was in excess of $420,000, so...
What's that?
I know last, uh, last week, or two weeks ago, we approved in excess of $401,000.
Um, I don't know if that's normal, normal. All right. I mean, uh, the total doesn't seem abnormal also.
I think August was just being hot, so I think there was a lot of AC running and...
I can assure you, my electric bill was quite high.
Pay more attention.
That's, that's what we, what we're...
I definitely made my contribution.
The town is paying for, uh, the electricity.
Right, the lights.
We, uh, no, no, nothing to do with that. I don't believe there's anything to do with that. It has to do with what, uh, we have to purchase the, uh, the power from somebody. And that's what, uh, that should be what we're, what we're paying, uh, to purchase power. And then, uh, the electric company, uh, charges, uh, the people. But, uh, you just don't generate power at no cost, and we, we have to pay for it.
Yeah, I don't think that number is all that off though.
Uh-huh.
I think that that's within the same ballpark each time, so we can keep an eye on it though.
Yep.
Well, my electric bill was high, and I have central AC, so... And then when everybody else is using central AC, to selectman Watson's point, the cost to purchase power escalates. So, the purchase cost becomes higher, in addition to your kilowatt hour use being higher. So, I would say this is in order because of the hot one.
All those in favor? unanimous? Fantastic. All right, we have approved the minutes. Minutes from May 26, 2020.
Motion to approve minutes from May 26, 2020.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All abstain.
Abstain. Diastole.
Yep. Executive session minutes from August 3rd, 2020.
Motion to approve executive session minutes from Monday, August 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Executive session minutes from August 7th, 2020.
Motion to approve executive session minutes from Monday, August 7th, 27, 2020.
I don't...
August 7th, my bad. Missed the line.
I don't see August 7th. I have August 20th, Anna.
I, I don't have the 7th.
Catherine, are we supposed to have the 7th? I don't recall seeing it either.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we saw it for the last two weeks. And it was in the last one where she had just made some kind of corrections.
Right, but, and those corrections didn't come back, so let's, let's push that to the next meeting then. If we can get the corrections and then into the packet for the following meeting. Um, executive session minutes from August 27th, 2020.
Motion to approve executive session minutes from August 27th, 2020.
Second.
Question?
Sure.
I know I missed the, I missed that meeting, but, uh, the executive session ended at 5:40. The, uh, whole meeting was adjourned at 7:05. We have a, uh, an hour and 25 minutes that, uh, nothing is recorded in the minutes, and I'd like to see something added there. Why, why we have such a gap with no, uh, no discussion that took place? An hour and 25 minutes. There should be something in there reflecting it.
Could you point to where this is noted these times? I'm looking at the 27th, page 1.
Started at 4:30.
On the last page, selectman O'Neal made a motion to end the executive session at 5:40, seconded by selectwoman Cas- Casper Nellis. Uh, the chair called a roll call, uh, and it was unanimous. And then selectman Casper Nellis made a motion to adjourn the meeting at 7:05. Uh, there seems to be quite a gap with no, uh, business in the minutes.
Are we on the 27th minutes?
Yeah, that, that seems like that's an error.
I am...
Well, is it...
I'm confused here. I'm very confused where these times are, so just a minute.
They're on the second page of the minutes from the 27th. Third page, sorry.
These are executive session.
Uh, we're missing the regular minute meetings from...
That's why that's 7:05.
The 27th, that's why the gap...
I think there's, yeah, I was gonna say, this doesn't work, that, that wouldn't make sense to have the one minute inside the other minute. Do you know what I mean? They're separate, the executive session minutes.
Mm-hmm. All right, so the... Catherine, can you make the adjustments on the August 27th minutes? Cause that's why there's a 7:05, as opposed to the start of a new meeting.
Yep, yep.
And then the adjournment at 7:05. Yeah, that whole paragraph probably should be...
We, we didn't have a, a regular meeting, uh, August 27th. It was just the executive session.
Yeah, well, yeah, if you could do that, because if not, then the timer's off.
So, so these minutes would end here at the, and selectman Watson was not present, and then those minutes were...
Well, he's wondering why the meeting ended at 5:40, and then there's a second by you at 7:05, which I don't know that I hung around for an hour and a half.
No, we did not. So...
All right. Um, executive session minutes from August 31st, 2020.
Make a motion to approve executive session minutes from Monday, August 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion on those? All those in favor?
All abstain.
All right. Um, yeah, so Catherine, if you could double check those two for me, please? Uh, next up, we have appointments. Joanna Valhooly Davis, uh, Groveland to the Elm Square Committee through 6:30, 2021.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joanna Valhooly Davis to the Groveland Elm Square Committee through 6:30, 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right. Uh, is anybody else here? Yeah, normally, we're more organized than this, but, but the way things are, this is the best we can do. So, you must be Harley?
Yep.
Nice to meet you. Um, so next up, we have the appointment of Harley Richardson, uh, 360 North Street, Georgetown, Mass. To the position of Senior Highway Labor Operator at a rate of $26.21 an hour, with added compensation offered for additional certifications and a six-month probationary period. Start date of 10/12/2020. So, I did read through your information that Randy supplied. Um, thank you for going through the process. You look very well qualified. Randy speaks highly of you, from what I can hear. Anybody have any questions for Harley?
No.
Catherine?
No, qualifications are good, very good. Um, where is he coming from at this point?
Georgetown.
So, it's stealing you from Georgetown?
Actually, we live in...
That's fine. Oh, so you're currently working in Methuen, but you live in Georgetown?
Yeah.
That's a better commute.
Oh, so, oh, yeah, we're a much better commute. Of course.
All set?
Yes, I am.
Bill?
Um, Class B Hoisting Engineers license and 4G hoisting license. Did you plan on working on that?
This Saturday, I have, um, going to a Class B 92A1C hoisting license. So, I have to jump in right on top of that one.
Great, thank you.
Ed, anything?
Uh, no, it seems to be very well qualified. Uh, notice a start date of October 12th. You gonna give two, two weeks notice where you are?
Yes.
And you, uh, you must have copied the skills off of my resume. Responsible, handy, on time, observant, hardworking.
Oh, my God.
You both plagiarized.
Oh, yeah, well, that was a good, good idea though.
And we're all set? All right, so someone want to make, wanna make a motion?
Make a motion that we appoint Harley Richardson to the, as labor as a highway department.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. I don't think there's any further discussion. All those in favor?
Nope.
Painless, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Well, we appreciate you coming on over.
You're welcome. We got one more coming in. Hello. I'm just gonna repeat what we told the last person. We, we're normally more organized than this, but this is how it is. Uh, so you must be Julie?
I am.
So, next up, we have appointment of Julie Yeba?
Yeba, yes.
Uh, 64 Proctor Circle, Pevity, Mass. For the position of Assessing Manager pending successful employment negotiations. Uh, so I looked over your information as well. You have a lot of experience in the assessing office, office. Denise spoke very highly of you, uh, so that carries a lot of weight, at least in my book. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Julie?
No.
Jason, no, you all set? All set? Catherine?
Um, she's very highly qualified. What is it about the position here that drew your attention?
Um, basically, I, I'm always checking on, um, the M.A. file, what's, I have to see what's posted. And when I go over the job description, it's basically everything that I currently do. Um, I'm looking for a little bit more of a small town feel, um, a little less drastic, you, um, something new, you know, change could, right, and so...
Okay, and I have a question for my chairman. Um, did the Board of Assessors, uh, make the vote for the supervision of this position to come onto us? Cause we sort of need that to happen.
I do not think they have had that meeting yet. I have not been told of it. So, as it stands, she would report to the Board, which needs to change, I know, that's something that needs to happen. But I can't force them to have a meeting, so...
Okay, so, I don't know if that was explained to you at all during the interview process, that there's, um, the Board of Assessors pretty much only takes care of, um, the setting of the tax rate and that kind of thing. And they, they're not really involved in the day-to-day operation of the office at all.
And that's how it is currently.
Correct, and during the interim, before we actually get our, either our next financial director or move on to a town administrator, the, the kind of agreement reached with the Board of Assessors was that the trans, the supervision of your position would fall into, under the, the broad umbrella that we have.
Yeah. I did have that question, actually, considering I would be reporting to you, cause I know that you're in the process of finding, as a financial person, so...
Correct.
So, that I would be, I, I figured I would be within, within the Board of Selectmen, with any, you know, questions, concerns, and stuff like that.
Well, even the simplest thing is signing your payroll.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Which would probably fall to me.
But, yeah, I guess, I would think that's what was...
So, I think in the interim, the, the hierarchy's gonna come to the Board until we do find a replacement for Denise, hard time or full time for those, for that role. So, just, I guess, what she's trying to tell you is it's gonna be a little bit convoluted for a couple months at least. And we'll try to muddle through the best we can, but just to expect that, there's not gonna be a whole lot of, uh, I guess, supervision.
Denise would explain.
Okay, good.
Right. And, and just as a follow-up to that, on the other hand, um, it could be a very exciting time to step in here, because, um, we'd be changing and reorganizing, and the opportunities to cross over and learn other functions would most likely present themselves to you. Excellent answer, thank you. I'm satisfied.
No, that's okay. Bill, anything?
Um, so you've worked in Everett since 2010. Um, Jeannie Vedekavage?
Yes.
Tomico D'Angelo?
Yes.
I think I know a lot of your relatives from Everett.
Jeannie's my best friend.
Yeah, um... One way or another, I, I feel I'm gonna have to recuse myself, cause I think I know just too much of what none of you, the rest here doesn't know.
Fair enough.
But I, I think she's a good candidate. I know I've been down there, um, with my mom and dad's tax abatements and things like that, and they, the office has always been extremely professional and helpful, so...
And just to be familiar, I watched, um, a couple of the meetings on YouTube, just to familiarize myself with all your faces, and I did find Julie's...
Oh, no.
I had no idea what the connection was.
Well, I know, yeah.
Familiar face.
Four or five years in a row, I probably went in there with the tax abatement and said, how do I throw this out?
Throw your mind, yeah, I do like it, yep.
Uh, Ed, anything?
Uh, yeah, she seems, uh, well qualified. I just have one question on the, uh, job description. Supervisor, uh, Finance Director, what's under the general supervision of the Finance Director? I thought that putting the Assessing Manager, uh, under the Finance Director was defeated at a town meeting. We had a town meeting vote to, uh, put the Assessing Manager, uh, uh, under the Finance Director, and I thought that, uh, that that was defeated.
I don't recall. Did anybody else recall that?
I believe it was, and then I believe Town Council said that it was up to the Assessing Board, then, and that's why we're waiting for them to have a meeting.
Right.
The Assessing Board could make that determination, if they voted to do so.
So, it's under their authority to vote to basically release their oversight to that office, to us?
And, uh, have they, uh, do you, do you acknowledge, have they, have they voted on that?
They haven't met, to my knowledge.
Yeah, not, not yet, and that's why it's a little, little up in the air right now, to the Assessing Board. And we're just informed of that. So, expect it to change in the future.
Will we ask them to meet?
We can ask a lot of things, or then if somebody wants to do it.
Let's ask them, they'll do it.
Um...
Or the snow flies.
So, you're currently working in Everett, correct?
Yes.
So, you have to give some kind of notice?
I do.
Okay. Is it two weeks or a month?
I would like at least two weeks, but...
At least two weeks, okay. Uh, okay, anybody wanna make a, you, you're not going to. Anybody wanna make a motion?
I, I, I can't, I feel that...
No, it's fine.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, Julie, uh, Yeba, Yeba?
Yeba.
Yeba?
Yes.
Uh, 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 Assessing, uh, Manager pending successful employment negotiations.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. I don't think we have to have any further discussion, unless you want to.
Well, well, I'm just thinking, is, is that contingent upon the Assessing Board giving granting approval?
No, it's just contingent on employment negotiations.
No, I think those are two separate things.
Okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor? All those who abstain? Fantastic. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
It was nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you too.
So, yeah, I said hi.
I'm, thank you.
All right. Next up, we have COVID discussion. Any updates and discussion items?
I know that, um, we talked about Halloween.
It's on here.
Okay. Um, so, we can, we, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Um, so, we have, um, I think we're in, uh, in, in...
Okay. How many are active?
Um, there is one house on, um, according to...
Okay. So...
And there's another one that just came in today, and it's open to, uh, people, wobbly. And then, um, you know, I planned on talking to him later on this afternoon, and then, you know, something happened with my leg, so...
Okay. So, still relatively low? Still having a positive result?
Not, not big cases.
What do they, what do they rate this as, a white area, gray area? I mean, I know there's red areas, there's yellow and green.
It's, it's the yellow and the reds that are, you know, the most, uh...
Well, not red, but April's got much red, I believe.
They are going to gray.
April's had a swing.
Really?
They're close.
And I'm not, I'm not sure why.
They had a big influx at nursing home, 20 out of 31 locations.
Oh.
For 20, 20 people out of 31 new cases came from nursing home.
In the nursing home?
Was it in the newspaper?
In the paper, yes.
It's just public knowledge, and you could probably say it.
Um... Have you noticed, I've noticed a few yard sales in town. Any issues with those?
I don't find them. There was nobody even really there, and there's all this stuff out, and no one even had it, so...
Yeah, I, when I went by a couple of them, there was one or two people there at the time, so I didn't find that that was much of an issue at all. Which is good.
You see, we had the ferry walk over the weekend, and, uh, that was...
Okay.
You know, the people that run the trails down, and, uh, it, you know, it really had a mask on, and, you know, they loved it.
Yeah, the outdoor and the spread out of it, so those kind of functions aren't the bad part. It's the in-rooms, large, large amounts of people, kinda confined areas where it gets kinda shady. Um, so you mentioned trick-or-treat. Did you have kind of an opinion on that? I think we're probably waiting...
I've heard that a lot of cities and towns are the state, and said they weren't gonna do it, so...
I'm not sure what's in the fire area here, but they do...
Well, I think, yeah, I, I know Haverhill's trying to do something. Um, what that looks like, it hasn't really been...
He hasn't come out with anything, probably.
Right. Um, I know I read some things about CDC and the state guidelines. They, they have some kind of broad outline of what could be.
I did read, um, the CDC guidelines, and, like, at Harlem Foundation, we have a trunk-or-treat, there's no trunk-or-treats. Um, you know, you can, people shouldn't be going up to the doors.
Right.
They should put things at the end of the driveway, or someplace in the yard, so the kids can go, it should all be prepackaged already. Um, kids do need to wear, the Halloween mask is gonna be sufficient. They have to wear a mask, so much of this.
Right.
But they can't wear their Halloween mask over a mask, a medical mask, like this, like, either. So, maybe, like, you know, if they're, if they're superheroes, maybe they have a superhero mask.
Mask, yeah.
That's double, that would be...
Yeah, I talked to, um, the police chief and the fire chief about, you know, what they would be comfortable with and what they think. And I've, I've been trying to, to find a way to have something in place without having a high risk associated with it. Uh, because again, you don't want people going door-to-door, right? Because that, that's not a good situation. Canceling it and really putting people out again on something else seems like just another downer that just thinks people miserable. So, I thought maybe if we did something over at the parking lot, uh, behind the police and fire...
Over, over here?
Or over here, where you have kind of a tents spread out, and you're able to walk through and put candy in bags. Everyone that has, that's doing the volunteering has masks and gloves on, and have some kind of social distancing costume parade outside.
I'm not sure how they're doing it, but the town, the, the water town, they're doing a drive-through.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, you...
That was the other thing I thought of, is maybe doing a drive-through where you can come up and we'll hand candy to you, or something like that.
Right, but it's still being a bath, a prepaid, a prepaid bath, like we did for kids after that and all, through, um, the church function. They, they gave them all plastic bags that were filled with, um, sorcery bars.
Yeah.
So, we can do that, and maybe, like, Nichols Village, the kids aren't, they'll go up there this year, maybe we can get people who would want to donate, um, candy, and then, like, we could do it and...
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's still kind of fluid right now. We can't say yes one way or no, one way or another at this point. I think it is a couple of weeks out before we actually can make a decision on it. But I did want the Board to think about something to that effect, either kind of a drive-through Halloween, or kind of a walk-through Halloween, where people are kind of spread out, and there's different stations where you can put bags of candy in, in different, you know, Halloween trick bags, or whatever it is. Um, where people can spread out outside and still do some sense of a Halloween tradition.
Right.
But, I mean, it's still gonna be kind of fluid, but I wanted to open up to people to kind of comment on what their thoughts are, and the safety of that, and, and maybe being, yeah, maybe allowing that type of situation.
Can we incorporate, can you incorporate anything with the pumpkin event?
Well, that was the other question, was are we gonna have pumpkin fest, right? And that is generally a pretty good draw, but...
Well, I was...
That has a crowd.
I thought you could do that as a drive-by event if the police helped, so that you could tell them what time you're gonna light them up. People could bring their pumpkins down, wearing gloves and masks. People could volunteer, I know Ed and some others had put up the scaffolding and put them all up, and then you light them up, right, at like 6:30 or whatever time? And then if you could have an organized drive-by, where cars were allowed to stop for a moment, maybe on the way out of the driveway, just to take a look or take a picture. But you could not have...
Well, they could do that at any time from the street. I mean, it doesn't have to be organized to look at it.
Well, you don't want them stopping on Main Street to take a picture. That, that's a heavy traffic.
You mean stopping right out here?
Like, coming up the drive, turning around, and as they go back down, they'd be on the same side as, you could rearrange the tilt of the scaffolding.
Oh, to face this way, instead of this Main Street?
Yeah, to tilt it a little, and then they could take a, if they wish to have a picture, or get a, stop for a minute just to let the kids gaze.
Yeah. It's not gonna be the same as previous years, but some resemblance of it.
I, I don't see how you could have, um, a group in person, because you can't predict how many people will show up. Then you can't predict how you would get them spaced out. And with Haverhill now in yellow, perhaps going red, um, you have to be concerned that Haverhill may cancel Halloween, which means that everybody from Haverhill...
That was the other thing I talked to them about, is the surrounding towns...
There's could be a huge concern, huge concern.
For whatever 15 miles, I'll cancel it, and then we have something open.
Yes.
Are we gonna get inundated with people?
Yes, obviously.
It's advertising it within the town.
Well, I thought about that too, and I, I talked to the fire chief about that. We have some kind of option that I'm not gonna mention on here now, but... As of now, we're not having Halloween. But maybe we can do something, so...
Right.
But that's still fluid, like I said, CDC comes out with new guidelines every week. The state has new guidelines every day. So, three weeks from now, everything could change, so...
We, we had a letter from someone about the pumpkin fest in our last packet, I thought.
Yep.
Okay, so is that person willing to kind of take the lead on it, or is that...
Inquiry. It was just an inquiry.
Just an inquiry.
All we have in pumpkin fest.
So, I know, selectman Watson, you've been involved before. Where did you, where do you get the, um, scaffolding and all that from?
I think that came from Taylor Rental.
I thought Bill Dunn donated it. No?
Well, I don't know, he made a phase one, right?
Um, Taylor Rental.
Okay, so, we have like holiday line item in the budget somewhere.
Yeah, but like I said, it's, it's fluid, it's a few weeks out before we can have any kind of decision, and even that's not gonna be super public, so...
As far as Haverhill goes, Haverhill's been coming to Groveland for trick-or-treats since...
Oh, three years, yeah.
Time in memoriam, because they celebrate Halloween on the Saturday, the last Saturday of October, not necessarily on Halloween Day.
Except Halloween this year is on Saturday after Wednesday first.
This would be the exceptions of the rule.
Yeah.
They would, their Halloween would coincide with everyone else's in the normal world.
If other people, other towns are having Halloween, it would be, it would be great.
Right, cause n- normally, they would stay with their own town and their own neighborhoods and their own communities.
Especially we did it in the same timeframe, you know, four to six, five to seven, whatever. Especially if we did it in the same timeframe, you know, four to six, five to seven, whatever it is, they wouldn't have the opportunity to come here.
I think you have to be aware that, I mean, as a follow-up on that, in other years, Halloween has still existed in Haverhill. So some, not everybody came to Groveland to grab another sec- a second Halloween. If Halloween is canceled in Haverhill, that would create a different situation than we've ever seen.
Right, and not everybody in Groveland went over to, to Haverhill to trick or treat on their day.
No, but this is, this is not the same as other years as far as this crossover. I think we have to watch the situation carefully, um, watch the situation in the schools. Okay, I know where I work, we've had a couple of cases. So. Yes. So that virus is out there, still out there. So taking the precautions is really important. And on that same note, um, I know that all of the outdoor sports are open, but did we, I know the baseball league had very good COVID protocols. I'm wondering about the soccer league, did they provide us with a list of what they're going to use for protocols?
I have not.
Okay. Are, are they supposed to at this point in, in phase three? I mean, are we, where are we as far as, is it just do whatever you want for outdoor sports or are they supposed to be following the protocols?
They, they're still protocol, they should be following.
Okay, because I saw two teams practicing, one spread out, big circle, another one grouped around the coach in close proximity, and I thought, do, do we need to do something? Do we need to say something or do they already have protocols within the league that they've passed out? Remember, the baseball league provided us with a copy? I don't even know who is the head of the Groveland youth soccer any longer.
I have no idea.
It was Joe Demore for years and I'm not sure.
Way away from Halloween, though.
Well, who signs out the field? Somebody signs the field use.
Um, I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, they go to the work.
I don't get the field use, but those were done when Denise was still here.
So they had already.
So there's nothing new that's come in.
Right, but we would have the name of whoever was in charge. I guess that would be, to start with, and maybe reach out and ask them if they have some, some protocols in place that they could provide us with a copy of them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think most of, a couple of them reached out and wanted to let other people using the field. And they're not, like, hearing too many protocols that they have to, because, um, for Halloween, so, yeah, they didn't have.
So what did, what did you just say?
Um, the, the teams were given from the board of health, what the health follows.
Okay. Probably.
The state guidelines. That must be one of the, yeah, and that says that they're following their masks and, and staying busy and whatnot. And there were other teams coming that were not, I feel.
But, oh, you mean other teams that are visiting our field?
Right.
Cause they are.
Didn't belong, they did not have no experience, so.
Oh, okay, I get it.
So our, our team that had permission were asking, they're not following the, the protocols that you've been assigned by the state. So, I, I know that's, that's the answer, but, and I do know that they do have protocols.
And what about the visiting teams? What's happened with that then?
Um, if they're committed, then they do have protocols, but if, you know, if there's a random team that's just using the field, you don't have, you know, way to.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm kind of confused, so the visiting team is not a team that's playing against our team, it's a team.
It's just somebody using the field.
Okay, I thought we were only signing the field out to our teams. I didn't know that we were signing them out to anybody else.
That's not what's committed.
So there's other teams using our fields without permission? I don't know how we figure that out.
I don't recall.
Well, do, do you have a schedule of when our teams are using the field? Could we get a copy of that and that way we see someone there at another time, we'll know.
You down there a lot, do you see Shanahan?
I mean, I'd walk, I walk by there a lot.
Is it Shan- you're talking Shanahan?
Talking GYS at Shanahan, I'm never down Shanahan, but I'm down to.
I go by there.
Seven days, eight days.
I go by there, I haven't seen anybody using it, except for like Saturdays.
I was, I was two teams down the other day, I went by a couple of days ago, so.
All right, um.
Yep.
The other part to the COVID discussion was, um, opening of town buildings. I'm assuming your stance hasn't changed? I didn't think so. It's on here, so I figured it out.
Well, Ellen is taking the lead on this, I think, as far as making the list of the things that has to be done, right?
What do you mean?
Our accountant is in charge of the CARES Act spending, she's made, she's gotten information from.
Yeah, but it doesn't have anything to do with opening town buildings.
Of course it does, we need to have these things in place before these buildings can open.
Right, but we were just asking if there's any diff- any change in the position of opening or not opening the town buildings. And the answer was no change, right? And now you want to talk about what Ellen is doing as far as COVID relief funds and what's approved and not approved.
Well, because the library wants to open, but before they can open, they need to have things in place so the public.
Yes, that is Ellen who is taking that on.
Right, and that's the same thing that's connected to this building, for opening this building. We need to have sanitizing stations, touchless faucet, touchless bathrooms, um, with plastic shields, everything has to be in place.
When we reopen?
Well, before you reopen.
Yeah.
Yes, that's my point.
Um.
So there was one department, though, that I forgot to ask if they needed anything.
Who's that?
The board of health.
Right, we have our, we have our, our, our plastic shields.
Okay.
We had them replaced, there was a door that goes, um, first door, second door, that goes into the office. We had that door put back up so that people will then just go to the desk or to the, for the place's classics and not walk directly to Lori. So we can do that door closed, um, so we're all set, we just need some hand wipes, we can't seem to have access to those, we were told we can't have them.
I thought we had a supply closet full of this stuff.
We did, but we, we told we can't have them.
I.
Who said you can't have them?
Um, our former finance director, when somebody asked for them.
Okay, can we, can you get them handled, thank you, please, thank. So the other part to that was that you, you got one of the first grants paying for your.
Right, that's, and that is all, as far as I know, that is all that's taken, that we're using that for salaries.
Correct.
Not salaries, but from money that goes towards the extra COVID.
Yes, I know.
So we run out.
Right, so I think that going forward, you might have to put in for your prediction of what you're going to need for the additional hours.
At least, at least, so do the CARES Act now, whatever.
Yes, it does. So I think you have to put down, like, whatever you've been doing for extra hours, get it pre-approved and then it can come from that fund. That's my understanding of how it works, that Ellen gets, submits it, it gets pre-approved.
Okay.
Cause there would be extra COVID-related hours, which we're allowed to do. So Joe and, and Claire, you know, and if.
I'm worried that's extra hours.
Okay, she was in there too, okay.
So review of Friday and evening hours, I don't think that's gonna change, right? We opened up to Friday hours.
Now they're open up on Monday evenings, so.
No, I mean, we're not gonna have any evening hours, but we did have employees come back to work on Fridays.
Correct.
Well, I thought, I thought Fridays were more than that remote.
Not if you don't need to be, I mean, the remote is based on Caitlin's, Caitlin, as I understand, coordinates with individuals for whether they need to be remote.
Okay.
Or not, and it depends on.
It depends on their children's school schedule, whether they're hybrid or, you know, they're in school or they're not in school. And actually, those requests have been coming to me, which I, you know, obviously approve.
Yes.
Whatever approval it is, and then I have Catherine keeping a spreadsheet of who's requested what and to do what and where, just to keep track of it, so. Um, I don't think that any of that's really gonna change unless somebody says that their hours are their children's hours or something needs to change, but that's not a big deal. Um, same thing with department head office hours, anybody have any comments on that? I think that's pretty much the same going forward.
Yeah, uh.
Yep.
Uh, getting back to, uh, the comment about out of, uh, uh, hand wipes, uh, maybe it's time we get a, uh, an account of how much money is in the COVID fund, uh, that the state gave the town to, uh.
It's four hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Well, let's get a, let's get an exact one for the next meeting. I mean, it just seems ridiculous that if we got four hundred thousand in there, that we can't get the, uh, board of health hand wipes.
Well, it's not four hundred thousand in there, there's four hundred thousand available that has to be approved before you can.
Yeah, okay, and hand wipe certainly should be on the list.
I think we might already have those supplies, I believe, that, that's what I'm thinking, so that they should be distributed.
I don't think, um.
I agree, but even four hundred thousand dollars can't buy something that doesn't exist. I know, I, I've been into stores everywhere, the hair. Was there a reason given why, I mean, it's just so odd, you know what I mean?
I know, I know.
It doesn't make a lot of sense. But I know I go into the stores and, and the last thing I can find is these wipes, they're, they're just, they don't exist.
The time standing is they're here in the building.
Aha.
The hair not being utilized, and I'd like to know why.
I think Caitlyn will be on this.
If we have the money, can't find the resources, that's a whole different ball of wax.
Right.
There really should be an inventory of everything.
I think that's a very good idea.
Good idea.
So an inventory of what we already have. And then Selectman Watson's request is, I got one spreadsheet a while ago showing that we had.
That was six hundred and four thousand or something.
Now, we still have a good six hundred thousand left now, if we've gone down further, that we should get an update on the COVID spreading spreadsheet, whatever it's called.
Right, so we're getting purifiers for new buildings.
Yes.
More buildings.
It's been requested.
Yes.
Let's, let's get a, let's get a, uh, an audit of what's been spent and, and what's been purchased, how much has been spent.
Inventory of COVID.
And how much is left, uh, that we can use, and, uh, certainly the hand wipes are in that category.
But I will get that estimate, maybe no Ellen need that, um, for the.
I, I believe that's how it works, I mean, I, when you read through everything, um, it takes a little while online. You can, you can go through the different, um, tabs and you'll see that, um, people can hire an additional position if they needed.
I've seen that.
To, you know, so obviously additional hours for someone who's connected to the COVID response on the town side makes perfect sense, you know? Yeah.
Um, the next item, I think some of these things we can talk, remove instead of going through them every two, because they're not gonna change. In-person meetings, those are up to the departments.
Yep.
You know, if they wanna meet with someone outside or something to that effect, that's up to them. Yeah, and they're doing that, so I, uh, Catherine, I think we can probably remove most of this stuff, cause I don't see that changing anytime soon. Um, but, and we can leave it vague in case some of these topics wanna come up. Um, and then also the school reopening plan, there's already a plan in place, it's hybrid or full remote, so. Unless the school determines, which, who knows what's gonna happen come November and they can't have outdoor learning and outdoor, um, mask-free time. We'll see what happens in November, but I don't think that that needs to be on there at any point going forward until that changes. Um, and.
I'm sorry, they're assessing all the cases, you know, each town, all three towns?
They should be, yes, yeah. But I think, you know, as the weather gets colder, you know, when I pick up my kids there, you know, there's classes outside in the, in the circle out front, there's, you know.
On the lawn.
Yeah, they go out on the lawn or, you know, they go outside to have a break from wearing the mask all day, whatever, but that's, that's gonna change when it's four degrees out, you know, so. You're not gonna have class outside for an hour when it's snowy. So I think that that's gonna affect the COVID numbers as we move into the colder season, so. Um, anything else that you wanted to discuss under COVID? No, I think, you know, relatively still good numbers in town, it's just.
You could, you know, people on this, yes, and, you know, you probably have to isolate or quarantine, you know, they seem to, like, know everything they have to do.
Right. Yep. Um, okay, then we'll, we'll go with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming in.
Next up, we have the dog park grant, so that's you, Jason, right?
Woo-hoo!
Wait, let me find a picture with the dog on it.
The anatomy of a great dog park?
That's the one you're looking for?
Yeah, uh, mine's in color, I think.
It's called the anatomy of a good dog park?
It's great.
Oh, great.
Not just good.
A lot of paper.
We're going great, we're going bigly on this.
Bigly.
Well, I look big.
We're gonna, we do things we do.
I found it, you're in.
Man for perfection, hell of a record.
All right. Part of your thing?
Yes.
Oh.
We don't have.
Wow.
Uh, I don't know.
You wanted a drawing?
I think we're still learning.
Wow.
Gotta make allowances for that.
I wonder if they could put it up there and they could put it on the TV?
Take, take it. Do we each get one?
Should we put one on the wall so they could show it on the TV, though? That'd be cool, right?
Do you have any tape?
I have tape.
Right, can you see this wall?
Like this wall here, yeah. You have a camera on that wall, don't you?
No. Thinking none of us do.
Unleashed at the Bark Park? Very catchy.
This is just a blow-up of this? Okay, I don't.
I, I see a T-shirt coming out of those.
I don't need some of that, my eyes still pretty decent.
I'm gonna hold it like this. Yeah.
Yes, have the, uh.
Why not?
Park patron, Kristen, find another, uh, grant that was available through PetSave.
Okay.
It's up to twenty-five thousand dollars.
Great.
So it was something that would be available starting May.
We could put it up on this if we had.
And one of the things that I think we would have to do is decide on the location. So this drawing here is for the pines where you suggested last time I was in there talking about it.
The flat piece when you come in?
Yes.
Yeah.
On the left there?
That'd be fun.
Okay.
And I think.
That would, that had been a semi utility field.
Yeah, uh, youth football used it, and I figured once the other field that we had done for the football.
Down the back?
Down the back was available, then that would give everybody plenty of room.
Okay.
Originally, that, that had been planned, I think, for the tennis courts.
Yes, yeah, that never got funded.
Right.
Or built.
Tennis haters.
So.
This.
I don't know why I'm a tennis hater, because that was planned there and. There was some funding, there was a couple of funding options, right? So you found another twenty-five grand.
Yes, we have the twenty-five thousand that was voted at town council from the CPA funds.
Yep.
Which would give us the funds to go for the Stanton Foundation grant.
Right.
Which is up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in construction cost and up to another twenty-five thousand dollars in design.
Okay.
And then another grant from PetSave for twenty-five thousand.
So three hundred?
Wow.
Get in there.
What, what do you think the estimate is to build this?
As it sits, I have no idea, I'm probably half a million dollars.
Really?
What does the PetSave at twenty-five thousand dollars, what, what do we have to, do we, do we have to do anything to get that money? Is, can it be used for anything? Is it specific to?
It's specific for construction costs. Um, we would have to provide them with a letter saying that we're gonna use it for the dog park. Um, we have to give them another letter showing the town supports having the dog park, but I think just from the town meeting, that would be enough support.
Yes.
And that's it, then they write the check?
Yeah, and that's it, and, uh, the only thing they require is that they have a sign at the dog park.
What do you mean a sign?
A sign that says that they're sponsor of the dog park.
They have.
One of their sponsors is a radio station, and it is a competitive grant because it is, uh, nationwide.
And does that signage, is that in perpetuity? Does that PetSave stay there for the next hundred years for twenty-five thousand dollars? Are they buying our, are, are they buying us for the rest of our lifetime plus?
Yes, yes, they are, and it's not like a gargantuous sign, it's a small.
I think it has to meet the sign requirements no matter what in town, whatever that's six feet by four feet or five by three, whatever the sign, you know, for a business. I don't think it can be bigger than that, I would think.
That would make sense, but it, it would be a, a small sign. It wouldn't be anything, uh.
Beyond.
Detract from everything else.
So what are, what are your, I mean, this looks great, this would be.
Wow.
This would be awesome. What, what are they, what are your next steps? You put a lot of work into it.
Well, actually, somebody at the dog park offered, I just gave them some dimensions I wheeled out and they were able to make out my chicken scratch.
Great.
Put together.
So what do we have to do next?
Uh, secure a location, that's the thing. So if, if the location is agreed upon, then I think we can start moving forward. Uh, the Stanton Foundation's gonna require somebody at town to, uh, to go for the grant.
Will Rebecca do it?
We could, if she's willing, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, she'd be ideal, but.
Rebecca's on, Rebecca? Rebecca? Rebecca?
We'll forever remember this time in history. We'll forever remember this time in history where we sat here talking to two little speakers waiting. It takes a couple of tries. Denise always has to do a couple of clicking things.
Well, I know that she's, the wire, I know that she's good at doing the grants.
Yes.
Um, so if she would help you out with that, I think that'd be your best avenue here. And she's here all the time, but well. Virtually. Do you have the output to speakers? No, 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 on the, on the Zoom? You want me to do it?
Hey, Jason, what, what, while I was doing that, can you give me a rough idea? Between the edge of that and the playground, approximately how many, what's the distance?
Drawing of the corner? To give you a little bit better idea, at the playground.
Yep.
You have a corner and not directly beside it.
Yep, we can.
Okay, and these are, this is the bathroom?
Yep.
Coming in, back around.
So, let me do this for a little bit. It's a little bit better than sixty feet.
You can hear it, right?
Jason, I thought that this area was earmarked for, um, another field, or the softball or, uh.
Do you hear us?
Nothing.
Okay, so, we're talking about finding a location or naming a location for this dog park, but part of the next steps that Jason has to do is apply for a grant? Is that what this is, Jason?
Yes.
And we were wondering, since you're so good at doing it, if you would be so helpful for Jason to help him write or pursue the grant that he's looking at for this dog park?
Yes, I can definitely help with this, um, Jason, with that effort and wanting it's something that the board's election supports for the town collectively.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that the, the town and the board supports it. I think the thing that we have to do from your perspective is name a place.
Yes.
Right.
I know that there was a couple of locations at the pines that we were talking about, but because of conservation and some other things.
Well.
Well, we couldn't put in the first location. And then, we started talking about strawberry fields, which I wasn't a real fan of anyways.
No.
But now, we think that we can do it on the top part over here on the left when you first come in.
Yes, I think that would be ideal location, just because it's got constant traffic. The people that utilize the pines, the families that have dogs can go to the playground, go to softball, go to baseball while somebody else is at the dog park with their dog.
I, I think it's great, and as long as there's no conflict of field usage, which I don't think there is, because I think that, like you said, the, the youth football didn't, oh, and I think it was only occasionally that they practiced up there. They actually practice more in that lower level field to the left of that thing.
Well, I think that there was two separate uses.
Right.
Really small use practiced on the upper field.
Yeah.
And then, the next one played at the, the lower field, and that was prior to that other field being built.
Right.
And, and I think that was one year only because we were trying to regrow the grass on the furthest utility field, the one that runs perpendicular to the river. So, we asked them to stay off that portion for the year to allow the, the turf to really take root. So, we kind of moved them up this way for that one year only, and this year, they're not playing. So, by next year.
She'd all be, she's strong, you know.
That turf should be really grown in very well.
So, I, I love the dog park, I think that this is going to look really good.
It is.
And I think that that location, for me anyways, being down at the pines and that location is, is actually great, so.
Do you have enough parking spaces by that area? I'm trying to count in my head, you know?
There's fourteen parking spaces there that would be shared with basketball.
That go in, not along the basketball court, but that.
Those are just head in, which would be in front of where the dog park is. What I would think in that, where the hill starts to go up towards the library.
Yep.
You could put four additional spaces that would be parallel, that would not interfere with the slope and would not require any retaining wall to be built or anything. Because I know when youth football was down there, people parked there anyway, half on the grass and half on the road. Which made it difficult to get in and out. And I'm sure the people that use the dog park will do the same. And so, if there is actual parking there, I'll make sure that there'll space, there'll be more and enough space for people to get in and out of the park. And so, there'd be a total of eighteen spaces.
This doesn't account for any parking.
Yeah, it's, it's just handwritten in.
And this, this park, obviously, I imagine it would be ADA compliant, handicap accessible?
The, I'm not sure on the requirements for that, but I bet you Rebecca could help out with that. And that wouldn't be an issue, I don't believe, in making sure that all that is.
Well, what I'd like to see, you know, to my questioning is, a handicap spot, at least one, in that area that can be utilized by a handicap person to utilize a dog park.
That area? Yes.
So.
You're looking on the small one, it shows, you, you can see it's set up. No, this, this is the entrance here.
Yeah.
So, this is the parking.
That's existing parking, yeah.
And then, here would be the additional four.
So, you want it on the other side of the road?
Yes.
What's this?
This would be the small dog park?
Got it, okay.
Yeah, okay, I was just going to say that smaller dog, you have that separation.
So, you think putting, you can get four on that side?
I think so, when I measured out.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Now, if we were to revitalize the basketball court, which is in desperate need of rehabilitation, how would those four parking spaces impact that potential?
If you remember when we were down at the basketball court?
Yeah.
Everything I measured was on the street side of that electrical box. So, without moving that electrical box, it wouldn't have any impact on however the basketball court was rearranged.
Okay, so if we wanted to improve that facility, we have the room to do it and you still have the, the four.
Absolutely.
And could we include a, this is probably a better question for Rebecca. Could we include, to make sure that there's at least one handicap spot, parking spot for?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I don't, I don't think that would be an issue at all.
Yeah, I want to ma, I just want to make sure that anybody that wants to use it has accessibility.
Yeah, well, and that, and that's one of the reasons why I think a paved walkway that I listed there is important. Because that gives everybody access to it.
Yep, yep.
So, um, the only other thing that I, I was wondering about, and this is, I think this location is fine and we should vote to give you the location, but, um, as far as the use of the park, I, I was reading when I read about other towns that, that licensed dogs so that if there is a problem, that you can check the license and you know who that person is and the licensed dog, and there can be decisions made if there's an ongoing issue, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, oh, yeah. And those type of rules are posted even at the dog park that we have down there now.
Right.
I know that Chief Gillian would like to have all the users registered.
Yes.
It becomes a, an issue in terms of who keeps track of the information and how they get registered because an individual can't keep that type of information lying around. And, yeah, I mean, and that would be additional work for somebody here at the town.
Well, the clerk does the dog licenses, so if they were, like, getting a license for their dog, wouldn't it be a simple thing to just register to use the dog park?
Yes, but there's a lot of people that use it from surrounding communities.
Okay, well, then they need to just, there could be a form online, they need to register.
Absolutely.
I, I, I like, that was the part I read about that I thought, this puts some control and responsibility on it so that when there is a problem, we can check the record and see if this individual registered their dog to bring it to the park. I think that's fair.
Jason, are you looking at some, at some type of a user fee similar to the gate fee for the boat ramp?
Hasn't been.
You could use for, um, future maintenance and upkeep and the?
We haven't discussed it yet, but it's always an option. A lot of places, I know, um.
I think managing that's going to be the hard part.
Right, and that's where it becomes an issue. The dog park committee at the moment doesn't have the authority to handle any type of funds.
Because if you've got, um, if, if you're looking for some sort of a registration with the people that have to call up, there should be some means that, uh, if they register, that they have like a yearly fee, a nominal fee.
Oh, yeah, no, and, and from talking to people at the park, they would have.
Go back into, uh, helping empty the trash, mowing the field. You're certainly not going to mow it yourself.
Well, it becomes, how do you enforce that?
And other, other, other people that go to it have been as well.
Unless you have a key that they get to open the gates with that payment, how do you enforce who's using it, who's from town?
It's not an enforcement, it's, it's like, so that if you're supposed to register your dog to use the park, so that if there, if somebody makes a complaint and said, this dog, you know, they call the police probably if you really had a problem down there, the police would come down and they could check the licensing of the dogs. And supposedly, if we, let's say the clerk was taking care of whether they're registering to use our dog park, there could be a record that there was a complaint about this particular dog. And, you know, over time, if that dog and the owner do not comply with the rules there, maybe that dog would not be welcome there. I mean, it's a safety thing, you know?
I think it's a nightmare to manage, but that's just me.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a work in progress, so.
Yep, yep.
One, one step at a time.
So, does somebody want to make a motion on the location for the dog park?
I'll make a motion for the location to be more or less as shown. I'm subject to working on it with, um, the town planner and getting specific about the placement. So, it'd be at the front of the driveway going down to the River Pines.
Just a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Ed?
Yeah, uh, I spoke to Jason about it. I thought in the long-range plan for the pines that this was earmarked for, uh, some sort of a, uh, an athletic field, whether it be softball, uh, soccer, lacrosse.
I think the plan was to put another, at some point, was to put, um, tennis courts and another softball field up there.
Right.
But I think a softball field, it was going to be too small.
My recollection was that tennis courts were going to be where the dog park is being suggested and the other softball field was going to be located down on the far end, almost, um, looking directly at the softball field in, in, like kitty corners. Uh, up in that, where the hill kind of, um.
Almost on that utility field, yeah.
On the utility field, where the hill makes the ninety, that would be home plate. And the outfield would be looking toward the river.
Yep.
Pretty much as the current softball field is aligned now, only tucked in the corner, uh, in the back of the, the larger utility field.
Well, the plans have clearly changed for this park a little bit, so.
Why do they?
We want to, I thought.
Well, yeah, we're not doing the tennis courts at all.
I know, well, I thought, well, at some point you might, I mean, there's still more room down there, but you're going to move the old dog park, so that land's going to be given back to the recreation.
There's nothing you can do with that piece of land.
We're not doing the boat shed at this point, so that land is available. And, um, you know, at some point, that hill maybe can be cut into if we needed to for the land. But I think this is a good way, good solution to the problem. You said that the dog park was too small and on the back of a softball field and it was not a desirable place for it. That's how this all began, correct?
Yep.
And this, this seems like a very, very good solution to that problem.
Yes, I do know.
Everybody's getting what they want out of this and the dogs are getting a lot more.
Yeah, and I don't like cats any more than I like dogs, just to get that out there, I both like them equally.
Any other comments? All right, you have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Unanimous, you got more work to do.
Do you want to save these big drawings because I don't need this?
I would save them because those come in handy, those are really good.
So, just pile them.
I would submit it to Exhibit A in case, uh, my mind's from now, nobody remembers this.
I'm definitely not going to remember this. Uh, next up, we have Perry Park Parking, which is your thing, Kathy.
Well, it's not my thing, it's actually Rennie and, um, our town planner have come up with a, a proposal.
Do you, right, do you have a microphone for Rennie?
I was, I mean, I actually think it's a brilliant solution.
Once you sit there and you can be picked up on this one.
Rebecca, can you still hear us? What? She can hear, we can't get her, but. What'd she say?
I don't know. I couldn't hear anything.
Oh, don't do that. Rebecca?
She's working on a dog park grant.
Can you hear us now?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, don't touch your computer. All right, let's, let's get through this as quick as possible.
All right.
So, you and Rennie had come up with some kind of option for parking over by Perry Park? I guess we're still talking about that location behind the old fence backstop there and then the long King Street Perry Park area, is that what we're talking about?
Yep.
Yes, so, um, the town had applied for a shared streets program through MassDOT to do some transportation improvements along Main Street, which encompassed some of the improvements along King Street for additional parking in that particular area. As we know, Main Street is owned by MassDOT, so we can't really do any improvements without their approval. So, this grant was a good way to kind of pilot that and allow us to make some of those changes to accommodate some additional parking. However, we were unsuccessful with our application. And so, Rennie and I, Rennie and I were thinking that the silver lining in this is that we had worked with an engineer to put together a plan that offers some really good ideas on how we could probably get something implemented for short money in-house that would encompass lining some spots along King Street so they're clearly delineated. And then, to prohibit parking on the actual green space in the park, since it kind of welcomes that with the baseball backstop, we would include, uh, plenter boxes and work with the volunteers who would like to supply labor or Eagle Scouts for projects or something of that nature, and then have the garden clubs help us and plant some flowers and add some signage. So, it would kind of prohibit you from parking in that particular area and encourage you to park along King Street, which is clearly a better, um, uh, safety issue as well as opposed to backing out onto a busy roadway. So, Rennie and I thought we could try and do something in-house for, for small money that would accommodate the situation that you're currently facing with people parking kind of illegally in that particular area while also offering them additional parking and adding to our parking inventory in the vicinity of the square.
Okay. I don't, do you have a picture of this? I don't have a picture of this.
Yeah. There you go. So, the, so the six parking spaces on Main Street?
No, the ones that are on Main Street wouldn't be striped. Those are the ones that were part of the original grant application to pilot the additional parking along Main Street. But the actual parking spaces that are along King Street would be the ones that need to be looked at.
That's a lot of parking, one, two, three.
Nine cars.
That's a lot, yeah.
Why can't the ones on Main Street be striped?
Because there's no parking on a state highway.
I think it's a state highway.
That's, that was going to be my next comment, but I just wanted to make sure, okay. Any questions? Ed?
The, the parking on King Street side, uh, I, I know, I, I, at least twice a year, maybe more, maybe more, the Congregational Church uses that field for parking at, at some of their events. And I've seen that at, at times, it's pretty well full. And especially after a rainstorm, it gets a little muddy in there. But that would, with the parking striped out there, it would, it would prevent the entrance or exit of vehicles onto that area, which they've been using for, for quite a while. Did you touch bases with the Congregational Church on that?
We could certainly reach out to them and, and, and find if they have any alternative solutions or would like to work together and try and accommodate additional parking. I know they have a, a very large parking lot in the back as well that accompanies their features over there. So, um, while they utilize that particular parking, it might just be a benefit to them having it lined and striped, but we can certainly reach out to them in this effort.
Yeah, I know they do u, they do utilize that, but on a couple of events that they have, the overflow parking, which is basically that field is, is almost full. They, they get that many people there. And I'd rather see them on there than, than parked along King Street, which narrows the lane and there's a, a sight issue there. So, uh, would the parking be allowed on there in the wintertime?
On the striped places?
No, during the wintertime?
Well, because obviously during snow days.
There's being a street parking, yeah.
Right.
Anything else, Ed?
No, 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 I'm all set.
Jason?
No, I'm good.
Kathy?
No, I think this is a good solution. I'm a member of the Congregational Church, I'd be glad to reach out and see if they have any overwhelming opposition to that green space being restored to, to a place of beauty. I don't think they would have, I mean.
The other thing we could do too is if they use that for specific days, we could block out some spaces so that they have the ability to still use it, you know what I mean?
I recall them trying to get people to use the back lot. Tracy Guilford used to stand out back, trying to direct people where to park in the back lot, which is a pretty big lot. And then I know myself, we all park all the way up King Street and walk down to the fair. I mean, I've never had to park on the Perry Park side to, to go to the fair. You know, if they really need a parking, they could maybe get that one-way road piece there, blocked off that one day in front of the church for people who are handicapped and have walking issues.
Both right lane coming down to the.
Yeah, that's just one way on that, that side. I mean, if that could be allocated to parking, that would certainly help everybody who doesn't want to have to walk that far.
There's enough room on that side, right? I think so, I think it's at least double wide.
Oh, it's double wide, yeah, it is. So, I mean, I, I feel like this is a, a really good idea. I feel stupid that I didn't think of it. But, but I mean, just that whole issue of, you know, thirty years ago, a couple of cars parked there, there wasn't the kind of traffic on Main Street that we now have. You know, so by us looking the other way, while these cars are cutting parking spaces in the reeds and pulling out where people can't see where they're coming from, I feel like we're just setting ourselves up for a liability if we don't start to take some steps. And this, this would be ideal for the.
And to add to that too, we thought it might be a good opportunity to start small and, and kind of grow with that in terms of working with the invasive, then the Japanese not weed over on the side and try and open up Perry Park and determine what the use of that park will be in the future, instead of just, you know, where can we would park or just some green spaces, if there're gonna be any alternative use in the future. Have we just completed our open space recreation plan? It would give us an opportunity to explore that further. And this would be the first step to opening that up and providing designated parking for those who would like to utilize the site, if that's the direction the town would like to go.
So you wanna, you wanna talk to the church about a couple of things before we do anything else?
Um, yeah, I could reach out to them and see who's, I mean, right now, we're, we're in between pastors, ministers, so I'll kind of reach out to the people that are running different things, I can reach out to the fair people, the snowflake fair people.
So we wanna table this for two weeks, is that what we wanna do? Now that we have an understanding from Rennie and Rebecca, what, what we can, can't.
Well, do you wanna, you can make a motion for it unless there's an objection. I can, like I said, I can make the inquiry and see if they have any objection to this, 'cause it's just a once, once a year fair, that, that's the only big event that we do.
I'm okay with whatever the board wants to do. Jason, what do you wanna do?
I think it's perfect.
Ed, what do you think?
Yeah, I, I agree, we could, we could vote on it, pending, no objection from the, from the church.
Look, Phil.
I like the idea, I especially like the idea of trying to keep cars off that, that field. You just have too many possibilities of leaking contaminants into the soil. And if we are going to eventually rehab that field into a, you know, a utility field or some kind of play area or whatever, the more we can keep off of it, the better off we are. So I, I like the plan.
Make a motion, Kathy.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the designated parking slots along King Street and the planters, provided sufficient funds are available. And as long as there's no objection from the Congregational Church fair people.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second, any further discussion on it?
If we have an objection from the church folks.
I'll let Mike know.
What's, what's our, what's our alternative? There's only one piece of land.
I, like I said, I don't think there's going to be, but it, it was stated here tonight that we wanted to know that there wasn't one. So, I'm not anticipating that there's going to be a problem.
Let me start over. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Rebecca, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna skip over temporary town clerk for 106 King Street, 'cause we're waiting on, provide more information on that. And then we are on to utilization of the pine fields?
Yes.
Oh, that's Phil's.
So.
I almost forgot about that.
Is there more to it than just that item, is there?
What?
Oh, okay.
Through this current summer and fall, I've noticed that the pines is a very simple economics 101 equation. It's the supply and demand. There are tremendous amount of demand for ball fields right now with very little supply. I see this as an opportunity for the Town of Groveland and specifically the Pines Revolving Fund to make some real revenue that can be used to be put back into the pines area for maintenance, for cleanliness, for rehabilitation, for whatever we need. There are a number of AAU teams out there, they all have brick and mortar facilities, but very few, if any, have a ball field. They all have tremendously deep pockets, they're all tremendously competitive and all looking for a place to play games, to practice. I've talked to the softball folks, they have the same amount of unbelievable demand and is such a limited short supply. I see this as just a tremendous opportunity to.
So you wanna charge out of, out of town leagues to use the fields?
Well, I, I, right now, they're using them at no charge.
Right.
They apply for a permit and they submit their. Typically not. There's a fee if they wanna use the lights.
I didn't think we gave from.
Baseball field doesn't have any lights. And we require a certificate of insurance naming the Town of Groveland as one of the insured for liability purposes, but other than that, there's really not much of a charge. Or customarily, there hasn't been a charge. So I'd really like to take a look at the permit and then redo it based on reality and demand, so that Groveland, Groveland groups are not charged, obviously, they're, they're parents and they pay enough to maintain the fields. Penntucket groups are not charged or charge a small amount. And then outside groups is where we could make some significant revenue enhancements on those fields.
How do you manage that?
Well, right now, managing with Catherine with all the groups, I've got four groups down there and we've got a schedule that I've worked out with all the groups so that we're not tripping over each other on the same day. And that's basically how we would manage the same. We know that the high school would, would want some dates, we know that Babe Ruth would want some dates. But other than that, pines is typically not used seven days a week, so there is availability. If we could come up with a CPA to put lights on that ball field, could extend the hours of operation by a couple of hours, which would also extend the more enhanced possibility for additional revenue. And again, all that money would go into the Pines Revolving Account, which would be used to maintain that property as opposed to, you know, revenue having to be, come out of the, the budget every year to, to maintain that. Turn it into hopefully more of a self-sustaining piece of property as opposed to a cost center. We could turn it into a profit center.
I'm up for whatever would work and be manageable. Ed, what do you think?
No, I agree. And I'd, I'd like to see a, a building down there, a small building for a snack shack.
Yeah, I think that'd be good.
Whether it is leased out on a yearly basis and with a certain rental fee and with the understanding that it'd be operated on so many days or so many nights. And so there'll, there'll be, there could be a return on, on the money with, with that.
Couldn't agree with you more, because I think the, the traffic down there between softball, baseball and boating, I, I think.
Dog park.
Dog park, I, I, I couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Watson. I think it would be a tremendous revenue generator, even if we leased it out and charged the, you know, X amount a, a week or a month or whatever.
Maybe it's nominal. Jason, what do you think?
I agree, I think it's an excellent opportunity. I don't think the permitting would be difficult to manage, just because we already issued the permits and collecting funds at that time, I think would be relatively easy.
I don't think that'd be difficult, I was just thinking scheduling would be difficult, depending on how much interest there is.
We had four different organizations this fall and Catherine and I, we hammered that out in less than a week, a week.
Right.
And got everybody on the same page and, you know, the field is used on this day, you can't use it when you need it, okay, you have it this day. Basically, I just coordinated with the four groups and got them all at the same table and with, with a calendar in front of me and said, okay, you've got games, when you will practice, you've got a game. And they're still, even at four groups, there's a lot of availability still to be had.
I don't understand why this isn't coming to us, the schedule. All I have are these two permits, one when Denise was here, as far as who's using the fields. And I, I guess, I mean, I'm in favor of us doing something, but I wanna make sure that it's fair and that it's not being done off to the sides, that everybody or anybody who would want to apply for this new permit that we're proposing would be able to. And that they don't, they're not having to have a connection to somebody within the board, they should be able to be. These used to come before the full board's election, and then under Denise, she took this on, and now it's.
Actually, I used to sign those.
Okay, but.
For years, I signed those, until I got to the point where I'm like, I don't need to really be part of this, do I? And she's like, no, you don't have to, I managed, I managed the schedule anyways.
'Cause Denise did, but now we don't have a Denise and we don't have a finance director.
Well, we got kind of a Denise, we have a Catherine, we have a Catherine.
Okay, but we're talking about now teams that are not from our town. And I'm all in favor of looking at the potential here, but let's, let's get it down on paper and let's see what's going on and who's interested. That's what I wanna see, I wanna see what, what have we committed so far? All I have are these two permits from our own towns. So I wasn't aware that we were giving out permits to anybody outside of our town. I thought we were not doing that. Why would we permit our fields from outside of our town? No, but we, we had a discussion a while ago when Selectman Watson went down there and saw an out-of-town team on the field and asked, why was this team there? And I thought that, my understanding, it was my first year on the board, was that these te-, the fields as they stand now are only for the Groveland and the Penntucket leagues. And that's what, anytime I've asked the question, who uses this fields, that's what I've been told. So now I'm, think I'm hearing that without us talking about it, that's changed and we've permitted these fields to outside teams already, or are we talking about this as a future idea? Have we permitted these fields to outside teams other than Penntucket and Groveland?
Yes.
Okay, I, I feel that has to come up and I, and I need to see the information on that. I did not.
What kind of information would you like to see?
Everything that's been done and when it was done, because again, from my time on the board, this is only my first year of my second term, but this topic came up specifically because Selectman Watson went down to the field and said there was a team that was not one of these teams, Babe Ruth or Groveland, using our field. And I, my understanding was because we don't give out permits to teams other than Babe Ruth from the Penntucket and Groveland. That's what I've been told, every time I've asked at our meetings. And so now, this is new and I'd like to see, see the information on this, everything. And, and as how long has this been a practice of leasing out our fields to teams from outside Groveland without collecting a fee or anything? I mean, we're paying to clean the bathrooms and everything.
A couple of years ago, maybe.
It was my first year on the board.
It was probably our first term, near the end of that first term. So that would've been two and a half years ago.
I don't think it was that far.
I haven't been on here that long.
Well, Kathy wasn't here, so that was at least a year and a half.
I know there was, there was some, there was a tournament down there, but nobody had the, nobody had the permission to, or to be using the field, they didn't fill out an application. And, and my question was, do they have insurance? Do they have the permission to use the field? And they, they didn't have any.
Right.
And I know that they tried to get ahold of them and they didn't return any home haul.
Right. And that's when we started to say that we're not going to basically allow anybody from out of town, just to go and, just to go and use the fields. We had to have some structure in place because of liability, but that the in-town groups were not going to be charged, I guess it was, because they were in town, we didn't wanna double charge them.
Now I recall this. Mr. Watson, Selectman Watson's referring to some AAU teams that were down there. And I believe they were both maybe from out of state. And I recall being down there as well and being just beside myself, that I couldn't use the field when two out-of-state teams were playing in, in my ball field. That was a re-, result of people that were over.
Subletting, basically, right?
They were subleasing the ball field, they were overstepping their boundaries and their, their authority based on their understanding that they had the permit, they could do whatever they wanted once they had the permit. That's been eliminated, that no longer goes on. Anyone that wants to use that ball field, and I've told them, and I've copied Catherine on all the requests, you need to fill out a permit, you need to get us an insurance certificate, and then we'll evaluate that based on what we get. The subleasing of fields by other organizations within Groveland or Penntucket has been eliminated. That will not happen again, I was not happy with that, I, now I, and now I recall what we were talking about, that's not gonna happen again.
But I also asked, who uses this, the River Pines fields? And I was told it's the Penntucket, Babe Ruth and the Groveland youth. And I mean, I'm fine with that, Penntucket includes Groveland who pay taxes to maintain this facility, so that before we decide to issue permits to parties that are not taxpayers in this town, that have not paid for all the maintenance and the, and the structure of this facility, I think we need to have a discussion of how much they should pay. This, I didn't think we were giving out permits to other than these two.
We haven't gotten to that point of.
So have we given out permits to teams outside of Penntucket and Groveland?
I think we prioritize in, in-town people first.
To be honest, most of the players and participants in those teams are Groveland or Penntucket residents.
That's, the issue is that this is town facilities, we're paying to maintain them. And I think we should have a discussion within our board of permits and all these other things, I mean, fees that go with these permits before we issue these permits. We're doing this after the fact, the permits have already been given out, right? So they're already given out, this, we're done for this year, we're not getting any fees this year. So I, I guess I, I just think we should've had this discussion before the decisions were made to permit to teams other than those that were stated at.
Those requests come in in like January or February.
Yeah, and going forward, I would agree, but past presidents, it's already been said for, for years, so I'm not sure.
Well, again, I've asked on, in meetings on this board, who uses that field? And I was told that it was the Groveland teams and then Penntucket.
Oh, no, then you, you completely misunderstood, because I've said all along.
No, I did not misunderstand.
I've said all along that there are, the, 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 the pines is uniquely separate from, say, Washington Park, where GBL is really the only user of Washington Park. The pines is uniquely different because there are a number of organizations, including Babe Ruth Baseball, including the high school, including Penntucket. Including PennTucket Softball that uses the Pines. There isn't one organization that's solely responsible for that piece of property like Shanahan Field with GYS. Or like Washington Park with GBL. Uh, I think that's where you misunderstood. Or you just didn't comprehend what was being said. No one organization uses that field exclusively. There are a number of them.
But the town maintains this and the taxpayers pay for the people that maintain this. And my point is, Penntucket, yes, that's a tri-town school district. But these outside teams, um, they collect quite a big fee for, for, um, players to play on these high-ranking teams. And if we're going to start permitting our fields out to these type of elite teams, I think that we should see what the going rate is.
Yes.
Before we do that.
Yes, yes.
No, but we've already, from what I'm hearing, we already per, issued permits without even discussing a fee.
But there's no fee. I mean, that's why we're, that's why we're bringing this up.
Well, again, I just. My point is the mistake was that the permit should never have been issued at all until we had discussed the fee for this. Because that's, what do you call it? Putting the cart before the horse or whatever else cliche you want to throw at it. That's what that is.
I think we're, I think we're having two different conversations because.
Well, just.
No, wait a second. There's a conversation about what has been done in the past and would have kept going if we didn't put this on the agenda. And then there's a conversation forthcoming about what we want to.
What we'd like to do.
What we want a permit and fee to be down there, right?
Correct.
So, yes, things were done in the past that would never have come to light if we weren't putting this on the agenda today. Going forward, what we're going to do is decide how we're going to permit and then what that fee is going to be for those uses down there.
Can I see, um, at some point a spreadsheet that shows me which of the local teams have permitted and how many of these other elite teams we've given permits to? I'm just curious. I just did not think we were giving permits to these elite teams. And I, and I think that if we are, then we need to make sure that, um, we're involved in that and we see that.
I'm utterly confused. Do you understand what's going on?
Yeah, two different discussions.
Okay. I think I understand. There's two different discussions. Jason, what, do you, do you have any questions or comments on what we're talking about? Cause I'm, my head's spinning right now.
I think Kathy just wants to be involved in the decision. I.
We're the board of Selectmen.
I don't know that.
But that's what we're talking about.
Well, the decision on the actual permitting.
That's what we're talking about.
Not, yeah.
Going forward, but in the, obviously.
Well, we can't do anything about the past. That's why we're looking at this as an agenda item. So going forward, we have a better idea of what we want to do as a board.
Okay, so for starting purposes, then I would need to see the sheet showing all the permits that have been issued and whether or not these are elite teams or local teams. I would need to see that. And then I need to, I need to see what's the going rate for these elite teams to use fields. Like I know there's a, a lacro, there's a field up by the old Tubing Hill in Amesbury that teams, um, rent to use for lacrosse and soccer. What do they charge? I'd like to know what the going rate is.
There's a going rate and then what we charge. I don't, they don't have to be.
They don't have to be the same, but I'd like to just see what, what's in the ballpark. That's all. I mean, I know my kids played sports. I paid a lot of fees.
How much work would it be to figure that out? A couple of phone calls?
It could be a few phone calls, but I, I don't think I'm gonna get any AAU team to divulge to me how much they pay. And if they do, they're probably gonna undercut their price just so I'm there.
The only thing you could do is ask another town.
So I have to contact the towns to see if they in fact lease or rent out their ball fields to any of these. Um, AAU ti, teams to see what their charges are. Or I can go on their websites and see if they have permits and if they have fees, uh, fee schedule or something like that. Something that I'm trying to do right now with the permits going forward.
There's a place down on Route One in Danvers for baseball. There's a big sign and a big warehouse.
Sports complex.
Yeah.
On Route One.
What do they charge?
Indoors.
What do they charge though? And the Amesbury field, which is outside, what do they charge? That's all. I'm just saying to get some parameters, get some parameters.
Let's get some more information. We've, we've circled around the wagons on this for longer than I think we need to. So, Bill, if you could.
I think I'll take back the whole idea.
Can you, can you maybe find a couple of. Roundabout ballpark pricing and move into another discussion for the next meeting to say this is what we think we can charge and then what the process would be.
See, I, I think if I want to put myself through that much pain, but I'll, I'll.
I hear you. Uh, next up, we have approval of the Pines COVID cleaning. Would that.
I'm waiting to hear what that is.
We had a couple of quotes about who could do cleaning down there and if we could use COVID funds for that, which we can.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Which is still way less than hiring someone out.
Oh, okay.
Sanitize.
On the weekends.
All week long.
All week long, right. And I think some of the other ones were double that or a third higher or something like that.
The largest one was close to a thousand.
Yeah.
And that was, and you're right, you're correct. It was, that was only one to provide.
Yes, okay. So Denise had already approved that under COVID, so we just needed to acknowledge that that's been done? Acknowledged.
A question.
Yeah.
Thought you mentioned when I brought up about the hand wipes that it had to be approved, uh, by, uh, the state. Not, uh, individual within the town. You have to apply for, uh.
She did apply for the funds for that, for that specific purpose of cleaning the bathrooms down there.
And the state approved it?
I think Denise did that a few weeks ago. So I think that, yeah. Um, next up, we have vote to the board. Approved two weeks vacation from the first year of employment to be used by September thirtieth, twenty twenty. For Rebecca Oldham and Steve McPherson, Sam Jocelyn to receive eight days. Do we have context on that? By you and me, was it? I don't have any.
She can't add a gender.
Yeah, oh, I just, I don't have any paperwork other than. Yeah. Is that because of the way that the bylaws written and the overlap is ridiculous? Is that what we're talking about?
And this is like letting them carry it over because no one can go anywhere because it's COVID, right?
So it's like the, because the bylaws have the first year, you can't, it's like the day.
Yeah.
Rather than waiting the five years or something it was, something like that. You know, it would be, it would be, I mean, I, I think I understand where this is coming from and I think I understand the backstory to it. But it'd be helpful if we had some kind of outline as to why. Am I wrong?
No, I, I'd like to move that we table this item.
I, I think I get it, but I think we need just something in writing to explain this a little bit better. So we don't just say, yeah, here's an extra hundred grand too to go along with it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table to the, to the next meeting.
Second.
We can get some paperwork on this.
Hold them favor? So, yeah, if you can either talk with Caitlin or, or Denise or you and I can sit down this coming week or something to figure it out, then that, that'd be helpful so we know what we're voting on. And then next up, we have the warrant for state election twenty twenty, which is what I have here.
We all looked at it.
Or everybody had a chance to look at it. I think we all have to sign it, which we can do now.
So I make a motion that we approve the warrant for the twenty twenty state election.
I'll second that.
Motion to second. All those in favor? Already for the discussion now? All those in favor? Fantastic. We'll start that. And we don't have any correspondence and I guess we don't have any Selectman time, but I'm gonna wrap it all together and Selectman time, old new business. Jason?
I was just wondering if anybody had seen the water system capital improvement plan update?
No.
Is it online?
It's online. It's on their website. It's actually pretty detailed. Uh, the total expenditure is twelve million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred dollars. Over a twenty-year program. And, uh, yeah, I mean, it's definitely a good read, so I recommend, uh.
Does it include, um, replacing any old pipe in town?
It's all, it's got a breakdown of all the pipe, how old it is, what it is. And they, whoever they work with to put this together. Puts it in a category of percentage of when it needs to be replaced, how soon it needs to be replaced. It prioritizes everything. And it's extremely detailed.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd like an update, see how far along they were. It was put together between two thousand eleven, two thousand fifteen. And it was on their website as of two thousand eighteen.
Does it name streets?
Yes, every street.
So it might be good for some of the people who have.
Yes.
Kind of that colored water problem that.
So they can take a look at it and see what's there and, uh, where it's on the list.
Yeah. And how old it is and what it's made of and all that stuff.
Yeah. It's actually really phenomenal.
Right now, we have a, a no wa, out, you, no outdoor water use still, right? Is that ban still in effect?
Yeah, but we're, we're talking about the street pipes and then the interior water use.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think that's being enforced, by the way. Outdoor water? Should be.
I, I.
Is that Jason?
Yep.
Kathy, anything?
Under everything?
Um, well, I wonder where we are on the, um. Mike Dempsey was gonna do something with his document and come back to us?
I have not seen anything.
Okay.
We're still waiting on Mike to provide details on that. Yeah, so that's still with him.
Cause one of the minutes that we approved said that we had approved a similar letter. And now we've just been sitting on this. So it'd be nice to get this thing, maybe on the next agenda, get this thing wrapped up.
It's really up to Mike and him getting the information, so I can't, I can't do anything without him supplying.
Okay.
The details from the, the response that he's waiting on, I guess. Is that it?
I think so.
I, do I have anything? Um, no, I think I'm good. Bill?
Uh, yeah, I want to congratulate the, um, fine efforts of our police, our fire. And, uh, uh, emergency first responders for having located the, um, gentleman that went missing on Wednesday. I don't have his name. I thought I had it here, but I, I don't. Uh, thankful hi, for his, uh, safe and sound return home. That was a great effort, um, by everyone involved, including that helicopter that circled my home for above forty-five minutes.
Mine too.
Just to, um, and we did have, the building committee, the high school building committee did have a walkthrough of the site on Wednesday. September twenty-third, which was extremely impressive. Concrete, uh, concrete foundation is almost completely poured. Steel has started to be, uh, erected. And the project is go along, going along, uh, still on time and on budget currently, which is a nice thing to have in a government project. Doesn't happen often. Um, but it's a, it was a very eye-opening, um, kind of a site walkthrough. They're going to try and do this. At least once every four to six months when, whether depending so that we can continue to see how this is coming together and. Can you, continue to give, uh, the folks out there an update on, on what's going on. Anybody who wants to take a ride down Farm Lane Road.
Right next to the school?
Yeah, I do that at least once a week just to try and get an idea of what's going on so I'm not too far behind. But it was, it was quite a, quite something walking through the site for the first time. So we'll keep you up to date on that as it changes.
I have a question on the building. Um, it's the financial side of it. This year, I think, was it a one million dollar increase in our assessment on the capital side? Or something like that? Is that the, the, is that almost the whole amount of that bond or are we looking for that to go up again?
No, it's gonna go up again. As, as, as.
Do we have any.
Materials and things are needed, then they borrow the money.
Especially lumber. Lumber's tough to get.
Yeah, yeah. So as far as I know, they didn't borrow the entire amount at once. They borrow as they need.
Do we have some numbers on that or do they have a spreadsheet that we could see? Cause I would like to see that. I would like, I feel like we should let people know what's coming their way on their tax bills. Once we approve the tax rate.
Tax bill is the new rate is gonna be January.
Right, so what's gonna happen is that, that instead of that being spread over four quarters, it's going to be on two quarters. Which is going to be a little bit of a shock, I think.
Two quarters?
Yes, because we're on the old tax rate right now for the first two quarters of the year and then we approved the tax rate in December. And then all of the increases, which tip, in the past, haven't been very much, you know, we usually just go up our two and a half percent. But this year with the building project, I just feel like we should let people know that what should they expect as far as that.
Well, the average was what? Eight hundred dollars per household spread over twelve months, so it's.
Well, I, I'm looking at just.
Ninety dollars a month?
Well, we should look at what we approved at the town meeting. Only that amount is going on the tax rate this year. And so I'm just.
So it's not the full, whatever, eighty million or ninety million of the town.
Right.
Ninety, ninety-four.
Correct.
That the town's paying. It's half of that. So it's not gonna be the full eight hundred.
But it will be.
On average per household, it'd be half of that.
But this, but this will be a little bit condensed. This same amount will, will be spread over four quarters next year. I'm just wondering, at what point, um, will, will, will the full bond be, you know, the full amount be on the tax rate? Do they, do they have an estimate of that?
Probably won't be until year two.
I would, twenty, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Fiscal year twenty-two, yeah.
I would, I would think that schools planned on opening doors August twenty twenty-two. And that would be really fiscal twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah. What's that?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much.
Uh, before we get to add on, the point for the helicopters and locating the, um, the man who was missing. Um, I, talking to the police chief and the fire chief, they were kind of asking how to communicate, um, with the board. Cause normally they would communicate with Denise and then Denise would send out a notification. So, um, what they're going to do is communicate with me. I'm gonna communicate that information to Catherine and Catherine will send out an email to the board. So that everybody could be informed about what's going on, like somebody's missing or we have a fire or there's a major accident or something like that.
Will that include the reverse nine-one-one that would Denise used to do at the early stages of COVID?
That will be done probably by whatever department's leading whatever's happening. So, uh, I think when the person was found, there was a reverse nine-one-one code red call that went out saying that that man was found, okay. Uh, just like it went out saying that he was missing.
He was missing, right.
Yeah, so that, I think that was sent out by. The police chief, cause he, he has access to be able to do that.
Okay.
Both ways.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, a couple of things. Um, I, I know we, we've been, maybe about a week, we've been under the, uh, the water ban, no outside watering. But on, on Friday morning, I drove by Washington Park and the water was on. And the town should be setting in a, an example of, for everybody else by shutting it off. I know they shut the water up at the Pines. I don't know if from Friday morning, whether it's been shut off at Washington Park, but it should be. Uh, also on, uh, on Center Street up by the park, there was a private residence that was running water, uh, in their irrigation system. I did get complaints from, uh, the people that some of the private residents are, are using their irrigation system.
Are they on well?
Hmm?
Could, could they be on well water?
Uh, on, one on Center Street up by the ballpark, not a chance.
No.
Uh, uh, as well as other private residences and, uh, one business down on, uh, Main Street. Well, it, uh, I know last Thursday it was, uh, water was ending up out in the street because it was kind of windy. Uh, so they, some of them are ignoring the, uh, the ban and I don't know what they're using for a, an enforcement on that. But those are all at night. Uh, and maybe we ought to get an update. How long this well is gonna be down, when it's gonna be repaired. Uh, and, uh, I, I know some people have asked that. Uh, and, uh, I, I know some people have asked that, uh-
Kathy, can you ask Colin if he has an update on that?
I wanna make sure that's gonna be, uh, done quickly. Did the, uh, we did the audit on the COVID fund. Uh, uh, let's find out how much money we have left in our IT account. Uh, there, there should be quite a bit left, seeing as we're, we're just into the fiscal year. Uh, no, actually, time goes by fast.
That was a while ago.
It was July.
Yeah.
August, September, three months ago. Uh, that's all, that's all I got right now.
Bill, you wanna say something?
Well, just to, um, to Selectman Watson's point, I, the sprinklers, the irrigation system was on at the Pines today because after they treated the field, it needed to be watered down to let that, um-
Let new seed get in there.
Well, the, uh, the pesticides get in, so that was a one-off. GBL, if they're watering their fields, they have their own well. So I, I don't know-
Up at Washington?
Washington, they, they, they have their own well that waters the fields. Uh, only, the only water that comes from the town that's not their own well, uh, is in the, um, is in the snack shack and a little fountain on the outside, a little water bubble. But I know that's been shut off since the end of the season, I would say, so I don't know if any water there has been used. But I know they did. I got a couple of calls about the Pines today, but after ca- talking with Catherine and Steve, they had to turn on the water down there after they did the treatment, just in case it didn't rain, like they said it would.
Oh, then all that stuff would blow away, basically.
It would, right. They needed it to, to wet it so it would penetrate into the soils to, um, to eliminate the problems we have down there. So hopefully that won't happen again. And that was a one-off.
Yeah, so if, if we can get to Ed's point, if we can get an update on that, how long that well's gonna be down for, that'd be, that'd be helpful. No, just an update. And then, um, you know, if, if Colin wants to come in by tomorrow, I mean, if he can come in, otherwise an email update is just fine, that you can share with everybody. So can we get a motion to adjourn at six twenty-four?
Motion to adjourn the September twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, for the Selectmen meeting at six twenty-four PM.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Brett.
Thanks, Brett.